We call to order this meeting of the city council. And, not hearing, okay?
Can you hear it?
Uh, we need to get some more sound.
We're getting closer.
Okay, we're getting clo- alright, alright. Can you hear me now? So, we need to get up real close. Alright, uh, first of all, I would like to say that one of our council members is not here tonight, Vince Vocal, and his uncle, Bill McKee, died and the service is in San Antonio tonight. This is his mother's brother, and so that's why Vince is not with us tonight. And George Barudy will lead us in our invocation, and let's stand for that, remain standing for the pledge.
And forgive me, but I'm gonna read what I've got. So, "We are here tonight to celebrate a process in the city that we all can be proud to call home. In case we forget, we must always remember that this city is made up not of buildings, roads, and places, but of people. So, first of all, thank you, Lord, for the people that make..." What? Oh. "...the people that make Curville what it is and what it will be. As we celebrate tonight, one of our own," as Mr. Blackburn pointed out, "is not among us, Vincent Vocal, as he is mourning the loss of a family member tonight. Lord, we thank you for being with him and his family as they go through this trying time. Thanks also to the many blessings we receive daily, some of which we are celebrating tonight. Thanks for creating a safe platform where the community could meet to discuss, question, and even debate the direction and vision of our city. Thanks for allowing us to have an open and inclusive process where any and all citizens were not only allowed, but encouraged to raise their concerns and offer their insights, where nobody was turned away no matter how big or how small, no matter how young or how old, in the matter's status. Thanks for allaying the fears and insecurities among us that only serve to mask and distract from the true heart of the city. Thanks for compromising-- thanks for a compromising spirit that will lead us to a true comprehensive plan, one that encompasses not only the ideas of the few, but the ideas of the many. Thanks for a willingness in the community to consider all angles of a diverse community, guaranteeing the true comprehensive vision for our town. Thanks for the leaders, current and future, and for providing them with the tools and wisdom to carry out the vision of the community of today as well as the changing community of the future. Lastly, I ask thanks for a community vision that can and will be seen as a thread that ties the community together rather than a barrier that divides into separate parts. We give thanks for all these things in Jesus's name. Amen."
Amen.
Just a minute, let me-- a little bit of a preface to our pledge. I've asked Judy Eichner to lead us in the pledge tonight. Some of you know that in the last couple of months, her daughter-in-law, Janelle, headed to Afghanistan for a year. She is in the Air Force, and she will serve there. But that leaves Brad and the two boys who are five and seven. So, Judy's been doing some extra mothering these days.
Thank you, Bill. Would you join us? Let's join together in the pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have our visitor citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers will be limited to the first 10 speakers, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. Do we have anyone for the visitor citizens forum?
I'm sorry, Mr. McDaniel, you won't be able to speak now.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Alright. If not, let's move on, and I'm gonna use a mayor's discretion to move to what is listed as item three, recognition of Curville 2050 steering committee and subcommittee members for outstanding service in development of the city's new comprehensive plan. This involves a lot of people. I'll not read all of the names, but you will see them up here on the screen. And we're gonna recognize first the steering committee, and then we will look at the slides for all of the subcommittees, and at that point, I will have all the subcommittee members stand. And we will have the steering committee members stand after you have noticed the slide for them. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Alright. Alright, let me ask you, if you are a steering committee member, would you stand at this time? Alright. Okay. Alright, now, let's take a look at the subcommittees. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Alright. If you served on one of the subcommittees, would you please stand at this time? Now, I will tell you that there are a couple of items out in the foyer. There are gifts to you if you served, and as a reminder of your service. Remind me what we-- we will have the certificates of appreciation out there.
Yes, sir, after the meeting.
Okay, alright, okay. Alright. Now, let's go back to what is listed as number two, but we'll make it number three. Ordinance second and final reading. Ordinance number 2018-13, adopting Curville 2050 as the comprehensive plan for the city of Curville, Curville, Texas. The plan is adopted pursuant to chapter 213 of the Texas Local Government Code and will guide the growth and development of the city, defining the relationship of the plan to the city's development regulations, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, replacing ordinance number 2002-14, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances that amended it and providing for other matters related to the subject. Okay. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, we'll start with the brief presentation, and then we'll turn it back over to you. I want to welcome everybody that came out tonight. Many of you I have met through this process, and thank you so much for taking some additional time to be here this evening. We've literally had hundreds of people involved in this process for the development of this plan. You'll notice that our consultants are not with us tonight. The last meeting we had was actually the handoff of the plan to the staff. Now, here we are for final adoption. Those of you that attended one or more of the recent public hearings on the plan where you saw a very lengthy presentation of 57 slides over 45 minutes, you'll be happy to hear that we're not gonna do that again tonight. So, we've narrowed them down quite a bit, and-- but some of you may be here for the first time, so we are gonna spend a little bit of time to kind of setting the stage and talking a little bit about what the plan is all about. This will be a group effort, starting with myself and three other staff members, but we're gonna move through 19 slides pretty quickly. So, the first slide here is the purpose of a comprehensive plan. And so, why do we need a plan? And as I said nine months ago, or 10 months ago, at the State of the City address, you know, without a plan, we're simply gonna be reactive. And a new comprehensive plan puts us in the driver's seat to make sure that the Curville that we all know and love is the Curville that we all know and love 30 years from now. And I think if we just let things happen just by happenstance, then that's what we end up with is happenstance. So, this plan is all about trying to be in the driver's seat. So, it's not a matter of if we will grow, but how we will grow. And the plan provides a framework of ideas and aspirations that can help shape a Curville that may reach nearly 40,000 residents in 30 years. The plan is an extensive compilation of ideas that will be further vetted by the community upon actual implementation. Not all action items will be implemented, and many things will be implemented over the next few years that are not even in the plan. We cannot predict the future, but we can do our best to plan for it and visit the plan every year. The plan will help tremendously with capital improvement planning, for utilities, roads, and drainage, and many other efforts. So, I'm-- at this time, I turn over to Stuart Cunias, our public information officer, who was very involved in the public engagement process, working with our consultants, and he's gonna outline a little bit about, you know, the process that we went through. So, Stuart?
Thank you, thank you very much. And I want to reiterate what Mr. McDaniel said. We are very happy to have all the council here tonight, and we are very happy to have all of you here tonight. Appreciate all the work, especially that those of you who served on the various committees did for us. Can't say thank you enough about that. And I'm hoping that this will work better than it did a few minutes ago, because I'm a long way off. Alright, let's talk about the comprehensive plan and some of the effort that a lot of people in this room put in to put it together. The Curville 2050 comprehensive plan, as Mark said, was an incredibly transparent and inclusive project that was developed over nine months through input from more than 500 Curville citizens, from all kinds of social, economic, religious, and political backgrounds. The plan received input from a number of sources, most notably the 42-member advisory or steering committee, which provided feedback from community citizens in nine meetings, all of which were publicized and open to the public. The 42 steering committee members were appointed in equal proportions by the mayor and city council members at the beginning of the planning process. We also relied heavily on community feedback from seven comprehensive plan subcommittees, which consisted of approximately 77 individuals who met in three rounds of meetings. Again, subcommittee members were appointed in equal proportions by the mayor and city council members at the beginning of this process, ensuring that, like the steering committee meeting, community representation would be evenly distributed throughout Curville. Okay, the comprehensive plan received additional input from a number of other sources. Following the initial plan kickoff meeting last November at our State of the City address at the End of the Hills, stakeholder interviews were conducted with more than 40 individual and small group sessions at City Hall. These meetings included more than 100 people. The comprehensive plan featured six community events where the public was asked to review and comment on the city's issues and needs, including the State of the City kickoff, which we mentioned last November, where attendees were asked to fill out an initial questionnaire; a community retreat, November 18th, at St. Peter's Tucker Hall, which drew approximately 140 people; two open houses, February 5th and 6th, at the Dietrich Center, that had approximately 250 people attend over two nights; and two more open houses, April 19th and 20th, at City Hall, that included approximately 125 attendees. All of these events were open to the public and well-publicized, not only on the city of Curville's website, Facebook, and Twitter pages, but also by front-page stories in the Curville Daily Times and the Hill Country Community Journal. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, I want to thank both of those papers, and I know we have representatives tonight. I can't thank you enough for your outstanding coverage in helping us get the word out about all these meetings and your continuing reportage as the plan progressed. We sure do appreciate it. Alright, continuing on, the city hosted two online surveys regarding the plan, as well as three newsletters that detailed the progress of the plan and the dates of all future meetings. These newsletters were included in both the Times, the Journal, and the West Kerr Current. As I said earlier, the Curville 2050 comprehensive plan process was incredibly open and inclusive. But that's not just my opinion. Kim Lee Horn, the consulting firm helping facilitate this process, a firm that has a long history of putting together comprehensive plans, said that the Curville community's involvement with this plan was unprecedented and overwhelmingly encouraging. Alright, so, moving on, what are some of the most important things that we learned from the plan? Well, from the surveys we received at the community retreat last November at St. Peter's, these were the top priorities, based on the 140 participants who were there. Number one was properly planning for designing, constructing, and maintaining Curville's infrastructure, which 100% of people at the event said was most important. Also ranking very high were focusing on quality of life assets to attract economic development, capitalizing on the Guadalupe River for the benefit of the community, developing attainable, affordable housing, bringing new jobs to Curville, creating an active, attractive, and connected downtown, and improving the tourism infrastructure. We-- as we went through the process, obviously, these items here were very important in the structure of the eventual plan, and also helped us as we developed our vision statement, which is something that EA will talk about.
Thank you, Stuart. So, in addition to the elements and the priorities that were identified at the community retreat, there were a number of phrases and vision elements that began to formulate from the groups that were there as part of the public, and also amongst additional venues that preceded those meetings and carried on from there. Essentially, those elements were pulled together into a vision statement that was further refined over a series of meetings. That vision statement is as such: "Curville will be a vibrant, welcoming, and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it, seeks to attract economic growth and development, provides opportunities for prosperity, personal enrichment, and intellectual growth for people of all ages, and does so while preserving the small-town charm, heritage, arts, and culture of the community." From that vision statement, there was, as Stuart elaborated on, there was a number of subcommittee meetings and steering committee meetings over subsequent months, where an extensive amount of work went into a number of chapters. The planned components can be seen on the slide above, but those chapters were divided into 13 critical areas. Not only did you have the traditional land use and transportation/ mobility chapters that Mr. Paxton will go over in a minute, but you had additional sections, such as economic development, which had its own subcommittee; community and neighborhood character placemaking, which had its own subcommittee; mobility and transportation; water, wastewater, and drainage; public facilities and services; parks, open space, and the river corridor, as well as downtown revitalization. As we progressed through the planning processes for those with the subcommittees, as well as continuing the steering committee work, we also recognized that there was an additional section that needed to come separate because of the emphasis that the community was placing. And so, we added an additional housing chapter, because that is so critical to the Curville community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Paxton to further brief on two specific and important chapters, land use and transportation.
Thank you, EA. As Mr. McDaniel mentioned, that this is not-- can't predict the future, but rather plan for what we expect to come forward. The future land use plan is not a zoning map. It does not change the zoning of any properties. It is just what the community foresaw and the community's growth as we look to grow. If and when the current landowners or heirs decide to do some change to the property, whether it be zoning or a new development, the future land use plan will be the guiding policy on those decisions for both Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. The future land use plan also helps in guiding some of the capital improvement projects. With the existing land use-- or, excuse me, the existing comprehensive plan from 2008 compared to the 2018 Curville 2050 plan, the 2008 plan led to several capital projects, and the 2008 plan focused on an outward growth. So, with those capital improvement projects, there are many areas that have developed or are prime for development from the results of that plan. In contrast, the Curville 2050 plan is actually looking at more of an inward growth towards the community and the catalyst areas across the city. Future land use plan translated the previous plan land uses into place types. Those place types are more of a broad description, similar to the existing land uses in the area, focusing on those catalyst projects around the community. It also extends the new trends and the new place types into the ETJ, and again identifies those 11 specific catalyst areas. Master thoroughfare plan, looking at major corridors and collectors throughout the community, focusing more on, again, the capital improvements, whether it be built by the city, by a developer or partnership sharing those costs. The components of the thoroughfare plan were reviewed based on topography, the floodplain, existing private streets, and focused on the connectivity with future development. This plan does not have exact alignment at this level of detail, but that'll come with future developments as those are addressed accordingly. But that'll turn it over to Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, Drew. So, we're nearing the completion of the presentation here with the implementation metrics overview. The plan does include about 75 pages of potential action items in chapter 13, which is the implementation plan. This creates accountability around delivering results rather than it just being a planning exercise or a study that sits on a shelf. We will need to revisit the plan through a public process annually, starting probably April or May of next year, and it will need more extensive updating every five years. So, it's a dynamic document. It's not one-and-done if adopted here tonight. The plan will be tied to our budget process to help prioritize spending while living within our means, so there's several items in here that are quite expensive. So, not all this will be done, especially in the first, you know, two or three or five or 10 years, and some of it may never be done, as I said earlier. But it helps to prioritize, just like with your household budgets, if you have a limited amount of money, you want to make sure that you're prioritizing everything, and not everything necessarily gets done. But that's what the plan is about as well. So, and because the action items are just ideas at this point, there are some that may not be practical or doable several years from now. My experience in doing these plans, oftentimes, a year from now, two years, three years, the plan's amended, and certain things are added, certain things come out, as we know more about what the future holds. In closing, a quick recap of where we are after nine or 10 months of work. The Curville 2050 Steering Committee recommended the plan for adoption back in May. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing and then took action to unanimously recommend adoption of the plan earlier this month. And then, earlier this month, also, the city council held a public hearing and adopted the plan on first reading. And finally, we-- this leads us to today, on second final reading. The final version of the plan being considered does include some additional minor edits since the last meeting of the council. You can imagine, in a 300-plus-page document, there's gonna be typos, and it's never ever gonna be perfect. But those final edits and corrections, which are on the screen now, amount mostly to format tweaks or punctuation corrections. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, that concludes the presentation. At this time, I'll turn it back over to you.
Alright. This time, we want to hear from persons who have indicated they want to speak to this, and the-- let me say that we have 20 persons who have asked to speak. You each have four minutes. You would probably bless us all if you didn't use all four minutes. Because after speaking, then it comes back to council for action and discussion. So, I would urge you to be brief, but get said what you need to say. And I'm going to tell you who is coming up, the first four, and then the next four. Okay? Warren Ferguson, Sue Teeman, Gary Cooper, and Glenn Andrew.
Okay, that's the cow-chip toss champion coming to the podium right here, just so everybody's clear.
Yeah.
So, we have two mics on either side. Feel free to use either one.
That didn't count on my time, did it?
No. No, no.
My name is Warren Ferguson. My wife and I live at 2404 Rock Creek Drive in Curville. In February of last year, when the elected place for councilman resigned, I was selected to serve the remaining 15 months of his term on the city council. Shortly thereafter, we hired city manager Mark McDaniel, and not long after that, we identified the need to update Curville's existing 2008 comprehensive plan. We requested proposals and received a number, invited the top three proposers to make a presentation. They all came, and we ended up selecting Kim Lee Horn and Associates by unanimous 5-0 vote. Then, each of us on the city council selected six folks to be on the steering committee, as you heard. Furthermore, we select-- each selected two persons to be on each of seven subcommittees. Additionally, there were 21 stakeholder interviews with 100-plus people in 40 sessions. Over the course of the past 11 months, the 324-page revised draft of the Curville 2050 comprehensive plan has been developed and fine-tuned. The most recent draft was posted for review on Thursday of last week after a PNZ public hearing and the first reading and approval of the ordinance by the city council. Now, Curville, in my opinion, is very fortunate to be growing. Many small cities are not. As a matter of fact, many small cities are dying. We have excellent, way-above-average schools, both public and private, and there are opportunities for folks to get specific skills necessary to get good-paying jobs. We have a growing university. Shriner has a target of 2,150 students by 2022. Peterson Regional Medical Center is a wonderful hospital with great doctors, and we're just a few minutes by helicopter from San Antonio's world-class medical facilities. If you had cancer or knew someone that has, if so, you know that Texas Oncology Center here in Curville provides some of the very best cancer care in the United States. We have a convention investors bureau, and they're ranked right at the top of what they do. We have a very active and growing Chamber of Commerce. Not many cities the size of Curville have a big airport, and on top of which, we have a significant airplane manufacturer, manufacturing, rolling out new airplanes. That's a pretty good clip, it's gonna be. Then, there's Fox Tank, manufacturing high-tech products for emerging oilfield markets. Curville has a strong banking community. We love good music, from Robert Earl Keen to the Curville Folk Festival to our own 75-piece professional orchestra, Symphony of the Hills, which plays in this auditorium. We have wonderful facility-- city facilities all over town. I think that our city employees do a great job serving all of us in so many ways. These are some of the reasons that I urge the city council to unanimously vote for approval of the Curville 2050 comprehensive plan tonight. Thank you.
Sue Teeman.
Is this them?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Sue Teeman. I reside at 2412 Rock Creek Drive in River Hill. I'm not gonna take four minutes. I'll trust me on that. I just want to say, I've lived here about 20 years. I have lived through two comprehensive plans in the UDC, and I survived them all. And by far, this is the most comprehensive plan and the most well-thought-out and participated by more citizens than I've ever seen before and ever-- since I've been here. And I just want to say I'm 100% in favor of it, and I urge you all to vote positive for it. Thank you.
Gary?
My name is Gary Cooper. My wife and I live at 124 Aaron Drive here in Curville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the comprehensive plan. I think the comprehensive plan is an incredibly great-- My wife and I live at 124 Aaron Drive here in Kerrville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on the Comprehensive Plan. I think the Comprehensive Plan is an incredibly great idea, but I do have a couple of issues with respect to some of the wording and some of the trepidation that's been expressed in the paper. The stated purpose of the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan was only to be a plan and a guide for the future development of Kerrville in accordance with community input. However, the draft of the plan utilizes language such as standards and proactive enforcement and suggests how to accomplish, in suggesting how to accomplish this future development. Even though these suggestions are not binding, the use of these words clearly presents a scenario in which the city will create or be encouraged to create codes, ordinances, and regulations to establish these standards and prescribe methods of proactive enforcement. Having this language in the Comprehensive Plan will have the probable, even though unintended, consequence of turning the Comprehensive Plan into a guideline and a driving force for the establishment of a unified development code. To evidence and emphasize the direct link between the Comprehensive Plan and the subsequent development of a unified development code, I will read a quote from a publication distributed by our mayor, Bill Blackburn, during the first week of May of this year. "I," and then Bill Blackburn, "was vice chairman of the 2002 Comprehensive Plan, and that plan received a statewide award from city planners. However, the unified development code that was then developed to address zoning codes and regulations overdid in some areas and was almost violently opposed and eventually defeated. If it, the UDC, could have been adapted, it would have served well for all of us these years. Clearly, the 2002 Comprehensive Plan was used as a catalyst for the development of the ill-conceived, significantly-defeated Unified Development Code. I would urge the mayor and City Council to take the time to correct the language of the Comprehensive Plan before voting on it so that this does not occur again." Thank you.
My name is Glenn Andrew. My wife, Lita, and I live at 3553 Lacumbra here in Kerrville. Regarding the final approval of the 2050 Plan, here are 10 facts, which in my mind are undisputable. One, this is the most diverse, open, inclusive, honest discussion of ideas, wants, needs, and vision I have witnessed in Kerrville ever and almost anywhere in my 40 years of political involvement. Two, the prior majority council selected 60% membership of every committee and every subcommittee, including the Steering Committee, which means that that particular council selected the majority of every working group. Three, every tenant, every document was approved by at least a majority and often a unanimous vote by those committees. Four, two of the current council who voted against the 2050 Plan on the first council reading were members of the Steering Committee and voted for the plan, per the Steering Committee Chair. Five, the PNZ voted unanimous to approve the 2050 Plan. Six, the plan as presented tonight and in prior readings is the same as that was approved by the Steering Committee, with exceptions to typos and minor corrections. Nothing of substance has been changed, as has been falsely alleged. Seven, the 2050 Plan is exactly that, exactly that, a plan with implementation and details to be developed and approved by the City Council and the PNZ. Eight, not one person on this council wants to negatively impact, including gentrification, any existing community. Nine, Reverend Dr. Mayor Bill Blackburn has been the strongest advocate, the strongest supporter and worker for the Doyle community of anyone living outside of that community. He and the entire council will work to ensure the protection of each community, again, against it, not against it, as has been alleged or implied. Ten, this is not the UDC retold. It is a plan which must be fleshed out in the upcoming implementation actions and ordinances. Given these facts, it's clear to me that we, the community, should unanimously support the 2050 Plan and work doubly hard to ensure the implementations are consistent with the ideas both of the 2050 Plan and of our community values. Anything less seems to be disingenuous and grandstanding, at best, and grandstanding at worst. I urge each of you on the council to acknowledge the work and the diverse and multifaceted and coalesced plan by voting for this plan and then diligently working for the implementation in a manner the entire community will continue to support. Thanks to the staff, to the leadership, to the council, and for our consultants for such an excellent job.
Thank you. Next, Mary Ellen Summerlin, followed by Daniel Flores, Pablo Brinkman, and then Walt Canning.
My name is Mary Ellen Summerlin, and I live at 105 Turnberry Circle. The idea of building a comprehensive plan was passed unanimously by the City Council. The choice of a professional consulting firm to guide the process was unanimous. The City Council members individually appointed all the citizens who served on the committees. These last-minute objections by two council members may raise some questions in the mind of the public. Some may wonder why one neighborhood has been singled out, as most at risk of negative change or gentrification, when every one of the eight catalyst areas includes residential neighborhoods and every one includes buildings that, from the outside, don't look like the meat code. Some may wonder why all the references to the UDC, which was defeated many years ago and was never a comprehensive plan at all. I'll just say that for me, it is significant that the two council members who seem to be encouraging fear and misunderstanding are up for election next time, and both were very loyal to a candidate who was not re-elected this time. But I think by far the most important takeaway is that the great majority of the citizens who took part approved the final outcome. We all learned over the 10-month process that a comprehensive plan does not add any regulations to the city's code. It does not change any existing zones. In fact, like all comprehensive plans, it is far more descriptive than prescriptive. No plan can decide anything. Among its functions are to give guidance to future decision-makers by organizing facts about the current situation, making the most fact-based guesstimates about growth of resources and needs in the future, and to record the attitudes, preferences, and values of the citizens as best we can represent them. And significant input came not just from the appointed committee members, but from everyone who cared to participate. In fact, the values this plan reflects are exactly congruent with the citizen concerns voiced at the public hearing. From the very beginning, the citizens insisted that we don't want rampant destructive growth. We accept that we won't stand still, but we want to keep our small-town heritage, character, and natural beauty. We want people to age in place and neighborhoods to be stable and healthy. We want a community that is unified in all its diversity, not some rubber-stamp uniformity. That's what the plan really says. It deserves, and all the citizens who pour their energy into it deserve your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
My name is Daniel Flores. I live at 300 Pearl Street, and I was all for the 2050 Plan until it started involving my neighborhood. And the more that I read the paper about the plan and my neighborhood, I said, no, I better get over there and see what's really going on. Because our neighborhood, really, it doesn't look like River Hills or Comanche Trace, but we're very comfortable. And I was born and raised here in Kerrville, and I was glad to see this sign that says, "Your voice, your city." And yes, this is my city. And I would like to say to the mayor and the City Council to please look at our neighborhood, look at the people who live there. We're all in our 70s. Some of us are in our 80s, some of us in our 90s. Where are we going to go if you knock down our neighborhood? We can't afford to go buy other houses. We're too old. Even if we have the money, we're too old to move. So I'm asking you to please look it over. Like this gentleman said before me, it's a plan. So let's look at the plan and keep us in mind. We're not young anymore. Thank you.
Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28, Oak Park Drive. Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to be here and celebrate this. I first moved to Kerrville in 1968, and then my family returned in 2012 to start a business and be involved in the community. And like Glenn said, I've seen more activity, more people being involved in the plan, and more energized now on anything since we moved back in 2012. According to Webster's, the definition of the word "inclusive" for English-language learners is "covering or including everything, open to everyone, not limited to certain people." And I feel there's been every opportunity for, at all points, nine months, 10 months, to come up, to be a part of this. Roundtables that I've sat at, I've had people disagree on the table. We all had a voice. So I think the plan shows all the voices, some things that I didn't understand or I didn't agree with, but it's all in there. And so I urge everyone to support this plan. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and members of our community. My name's Walter Canning. I'm president and CEO of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce, 1700 Sidney Baker Street, Kerrville, Texas. After nine months of effort, unprecedented transparency and community involvement that rival cities 30 times our size, we're finally ready to adopt the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Following unanimous approval by our Planning and Zoning Commission and a successful passage during the first reading at the Kerrville City Council, tonight we gather to pass this final gate. The second reading and ultimate ratification and adoption of the plan. We stand together tonight, a community that has participated in a process driven by consensus, a process that's resulted in a plan that reflects the voice of our city and the collective vision of our community. The Board of Directors of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce formally endorsed the 2050 Comprehensive Plan on the 5th of June unanimously. The Chamber will continue to be involved in the implementation of the plan over the next 30 years. The Chamber will be actively involved in the completion of the specific action items that define the steps necessary to move forward with the fulfillment of the plan. The Chamber will be working to realize implementation of a holistic approach to economic development as defined within the plan's guiding principles. We'll work hard to become increasingly integrated, to provide leadership and direct the efforts of the Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, and to work in concert as never before with the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, the Economic Improvement Corporation, and KABhub to bring businesses and opportunities to our community that provide growth and diversification of our tax base, the availability of new jobs, and opportunities to all of our community while maintaining the great quality of life that we all enjoy. Consider growth as a key element of the plan, and this principle will be the Chamber's watchword. We'll continue to promote Kerrville as a hub of activity for the hill country, whether it be commerce, the arts, tourism, education, healthcare, or innovation and entrepreneurship. The Chamber of Commerce will ensure that Kerrville will be increasingly well-positioned as the best place in the hill country to do business. The Kerrville 2050 Plan provides the roadmap to fulfill this vision, and we stand as a Chamber committed to this objective. To plan effectively, to invest wisely, and to deliver excellence, businesses need stability, predictability, and a vision for the future. We, as a community, now have a plan that provides these things and more. The Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce is optimistic for a great future, together as a united community. Let's take a moment tonight to celebrate this great accomplishment, but let's also continue to work together every single day to realize our fullest potential as a community that is successful, united, and together. Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we will hear from David Barker, Fred Gamble, Tim Summerlin, and Charlie McElvein in that order.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Barker. I live in Comanche Trace at 3722 Clubview Court. I want to congratulate Mr. Mark McDaniel, because I think he has done an outstanding job this past year guiding this Steering Committee and all the committees to produce this plan. The plan's probably not perfect. It needs to be looked at and modified as we move forward in the future. I think Mr. McDaniel is truly a gifted manager and a leader. I have seen many leaders, some have it, some don't have it. He has it. I enjoyed working with him. I recommend that the City Council give him the support that he needs and also the staff that he needs to do his job. We need well-qualified people in the City of Kerrville to carry out these duties and the elements of this plan. I think it is wise for the City Council to listen to him and go along with some of the ideas that he may have. At the same time, you need a question that any time a new proposal comes up that is maybe within the plan, but you've got to ask yourself this question: Who's going to pay for it? Do you have the budget to pay for it? Anytime you hear the kumbaya calls, ask that question: Who's going to pay for it? And please maintain a balanced budget. Thank you.
My name is Fred Gamble. I live with my family at 1128 Jefferson Street here in Kerrville. My family moved here in 1959, and we moved to 618 Webster Street. If you're not familiar with Webster Street of that area, it's a half a block from the church where I was baptized, Mount Oliver Baptist Church. It's a half a block from the Doyle School Community Center. It's two blocks, two and a half blocks from Carver Park. A year later, we moved to 315 Coleman Street, where my 91-year-old mother still lives. There has not been a week that either my mom, that my wife, or myself have not been in that neighborhood. 14 years ago, myself, along with Bill Blackburn and Ed Wallace, started the Doyle School Community Center. Now I point that out just to make sure you understand that this is personal. I would not do anything to hurt the Doyle School Community Center. I would not do anything to hurt the people who helped raise me in that neighborhood. I am personally... I am personally a little bit offended that some people would think that there is something about that neighborhood that would make it ripe for gentrification. What you don't understand is that the majority of the people, like Mr. Forrest, own the homes that they live in. They are not renters. There are areas of this city that are much more ripe for gentrification than the Doyle Community. Areas that are flooded with rent houses, with landlords that do not keep up those houses. So I don't really worry about gentrification of the Doyle School area. And the thing we just, we sort of basically jumped to, if you've never lived in a city, what you have to have first for gentrification is a vital downtown that not just has retail, but that has office space where people want to get downtown. Will Kerrville get there someday? Yes, I hope it will. But I do not think it would be at the expense of the Doyle School Community Center. I would have never, I mean, I was at those meetings, not all of them, but I was there. Trust me. You would have heard from me, Mr. Mayor, if I thought in any way there was any indication of that. Thank you for your time. I urge you to vote for this plan.
My name is Tim Summerlin. I live at 105 Turnberry Circle. I want to add my voice in support of the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. It is thorough, it is inclusive, and the words that it uses, I believe it does offer a new perspective, a new vision, and a new strategy for our community. We all recognize happily that we're not talking about laws that are in stone, but rather that are, again, to use its language, open to regular review in the coming years. Strikes me that most every entity, whether it be a nation, a state, a city, a neighborhood, a family, faces the option and the pull and the temptation to fragmentize and atomize and balkanize, or faces the opportunity the other way, to unite and to build together. I believe Kerrville 2050 provides a sound basis for uniting and building together. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Blackburn and Council members. My name is Charlie McElvein. My wife Rhonda and I live at 128 Mesa del Sol here in Kerrville. We, as residents of Kerrville, are fortunate to live, work, and play in a community that has more potential than most other cities in Texas and perhaps the Southwest. Today, we stand at the threshold of an exciting opportunity for the future of Kerrville, an opportunity that will make our city even more livable for residents and more attractive for visitors and potential investors that can create new opportunities for our city and its citizens. The opportunity is the implementation of the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan. This plan includes nine months of study, as we've all heard, 42 dedicated residents who served on the Steering Committee, subcommittee members, approval by the planning and zoning board, and many other, or input from many other residents, over 500 residents. Throughout my career, I've been involved in strategic plans in other communities, but no other community, large or small, has been more comprehensive, more transparent, or more inclusive than Kerrville and the Kerrville 2050 Plan. Now's the time to move this plan into the implementation phase with a total endorsement and a unanimous vote by the Kerrville City Council. I urge each of you to take a giant step forward this evening for Kerrville and its future with a positive vote for the Kerrville 2050 Plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, Karen Guerrero, Ed Wallace, Carolyn Lipscomb, and Bruce Strakey.
Good evening. My name is Karen Guerrero. My address is 307 Lakewood in Kerrville. My husband Lang and I moved our family of five to Kerrville from Houston in 2013. With its scenic beauty, clean air, great schools, and safe, relaxed lifestyle, we thought Kerrville would offer a better quality of life for our family, and it definitely has. We've been fortunate to experience this community on many levels through our children in personal and professional endeavors. It is more obvious now than ever that many other people like us, not only fellow Texans but from across the United States, have the same vision and hope for their families and feel Kerrville is a place that they want to call home. Fortunately for all Kerrville residents, a well-thought-out, comprehensive, future community plan is in place, a plan that will honor Kerrville's rich past, nurture its thriving present, and foster a future beneficial to all residents. I'd like to thank the City of Kerrville for the opportunity to serve on the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, as well as the Chair of the River Corridor Parks and Open Spaces Subcommittee. I commend the City, as well as Kimberley Horn, on their outstanding efforts to include the community in this process. I intend to stay involved and be supportive as this 2050 Plan serves as a guide for even an even greater Kerrville. Thank you.
All Mayor and Council and folks who are here, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Ed Wallace. I'm a retired attorney here in Kerrville. I practiced here for about 50 years. I've lived here since 1965, and my wife grew up here. So we've had intimate involvement in Kerrville. I live at 131 Royal Oaks, which is just outside the city limits. However, I built a couple of office buildings downtown, so I kinda have a deep investment in the community. I think this plan obviously is a good plan, and we've had good discussion about it. It is gonna be up for annual review and possible tweaking as it's needed. It's been noted that the plan is not an ordinance or a code, so some of the fears about that are probably misplaced. I just got back from Philadelphia, and I got to go to Independence Hall there, and I heard about Ben Franklin. And one of the things he said, I thought, is peculiarly apropos to plans like this. He was working on a plan called Declaration of Independence, and he said, "If we don't hang together now, we shall surely hang separately." So I think to conclude, to vote against this plan is to vote against motherhood and apple pie. Thank you.
Carolyn Lipscomb, 909 Lake Drive, Steering Committee member. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to express my support for the Comprehensive Plan. To you and the audience, I believe it is a very good plan and one that clearly states the desire to be an inclusive, welcoming community that provides opportunity for all its citizens. At the outset, it was our mission to develop a plan that would advise and inform our city officials and city staff of the vision for Kerrville for the next 30 years. Now the plan is completed, and the real work begins. This plan is not a law, as people have already noted, it's not an ordinance or a code. Over the next 30 years, it will be the job of the City Council and city staff with input from the citizenry to craft the specific ordinances, codes, and policies in such a way as to incorporate the spirit and the intent of our guiding principles. It was disappointing to read in the newspaper concerns expressed by the two councilpersons who served on the committee. Their concerns related to several action items out of the more than 450 contained in the plan. In reading each of their newspaper columns, it appeared to me the action items of concern were not really considered in light of the guiding principles that informed them, but in isolation and without context. If the vision and the intent of the plan's guiding principles are kept in the forefront when looking at the proposed action items, I feel confident ordinances can be crafted with the welfare of the residents and their neighborhoods as the central tenet. Remember, before any ordinance can be adopted, public hearings will be required at which any citizen can provide input and raise concerns. It is my fervent hope that these two councilpersons will cease the efforts to amend a plan that was adopted by the committee after a long and orderly process. Rather, all would be better served if they channeled their energy into working for policies, ordinances, and resources that will safeguard the neighborhoods and protect our rights. After all, no plan or ordinance can guarantee with absolute certainty against an unforeseen consequence. Thank you. And I hope everybody who was involved in the plan, when they start coming up with the ordinance, that we keep everybody's feet to the fire so that we get the product that we all envisioned with this plan. Thank you very much.
Bruce Strakey, 615 Earl Garrett. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come here this evening after all the work that so many people have done on this plan. And I like to reflect on making a plan and how that's a process where we try to include all the elements that may come up, that may present themselves as we move forward. And that if we look at this plan and 65 pages of potential elements that may come up in the next 30 years, we need to remember that it's a process, and that when we really think about it, it's more important to have crooked furrows than an unplowed field. And I'm gonna ask you to think about that for a second. No matter how well we plan the plow, no matter how good of a driver we are, the furrows are gonna be crooked. But if we don't plow the field, if we leave out some of the furrows, if we don't take the time to weed, we bear no crop. We have no way to move forward. If we look at some of the items that were mentioned that are problematic, they're also very much like every tool you will ever pick up in your life. That tool can be used for good things and for bad things. It can cut your hand, or it can cut the wood the way you want it to. For example, one of the action items calls that we would implement a landscape ordinance that provides credit for preserving existing desirable trees. Yet it was presented in a context that we should not encourage penalties, that we should encourage incentives. Well, that action item does encourage incentives. It credits us to look at how can we improve the area. And if you look at many of the items, they offer incentives, they offer opportunities for us to use that tool in a way that is constructive, that moves us forward, that builds upon things that are successful. It also gives us the opportunity to look at the two most common complaints we hear in this city. I moved here in 2006 from Utah. And the very first complaint, or very first criticism of the city that I had is one that's all ringing in your heads right now. Why do we not address this river? The other thing that this plan does is it sets out clear guidelines that we can build upon so that we can avoid unfortunate situations. And as an example, I'll use someone that happened this past year. And I was not for this. I spoke out against it. But we all know that O'Reilly's tried to build an auto parts store on the river. And that's very unfortunate for them. They are a large corporate entity throughout the nation, or regionally throughout the nation, and they spend a lot of money in different cities around the country. And when they haven't experienced like they had in Kerrville, it's not a positive thing. And they tell that to other people. And we have all heard how difficult it is to work with this city. And in my experience, that really hasn't been true. But one of the things that O'Reilly's ran into is that they didn't have clear guidelines for what we were trying to accomplish. They didn't have a clear vision of how the community was gonna react to an auto parts store on the river. And I can't really blame them. There's a car wash, there's an oil change place. We can all go through examples. This plan, it is not perfect. The furrows are crooked. But let us plow the field. Thank you all very much.
Okay, our last four speakers, Kim Clarkson, Sammy Shaheen, Denise Smith, and Renee
Kim Clarkson, 1228 Lois Street, Kerrville, Texas. Guess we all knew the Texas. Thank you for the opportunity, Council, city staff, for letting me be here tonight. A lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, and I actually didn't anticipate being able to come tonight, but then I rethought and I decided that even though I didn't have childcare for my children, that this was important to me, and it is important to me that their future is secure in this town. I was born and raised in Kerrville. My children were born here, and I keep hearing the word roadmap, and it was in my notes as well. A roadmap is a plan, and I want to have a plan for my children. And what I want to come to you and say to you tonight as a parent, is I have a seven and a nine-year-old, and I want a place that my children can make a living as an adult in a place where they can support their family. To do this, they're gonna need a healthy job market with competitive wages, affordable housing, and they're gonna wanna live here because it's a vibrant community with lots to see and do. And that's what this plan and its intent is, to give us a future and for someone like me, the hope that my children not only will want to live here, but can make a good living here. And it really saddens me to think that there are people in this room, and there are people in this town that think that they're gonna be forced out of their communities. I was part of this plan, I was a small part, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm thankful for the guidance of Council. And I wouldn't stand up here, I wouldn't say a word if I thought for a minute that that was true. And I put my faith and my trust in our leaders to do what they know the right thing to do us, and that's what's gonna move our community in the right direction. So I urge all of you to please support this plan.
Kim's a lot taller than me. Sammy Shaheen, 150 Vista Hills Drive. Thank you all for all that you're doing for Kerrville. This is a vibrant city. I'm so proud to be back in Kerrville. I grew up here. I grew up here. I came here tonight to speak because I have some very dear friends that live in the community that we're talking about. And I received a phone call that they were scared to death that they were going to be thrown out of their homes. And what I have to say is, please, please stop the fear mongering. We get enough of that out in the rest of the world. For the people who brought this up and went to their community, and I can't say exactly what was said there because I wasn't there to hear it. But you've been with this plan since the beginning. If there were concerns, why were they not brought up before now? Why wait till the last minute and go to this community and speak to this group and scare them to death? That is wrong. We have to stop this. Do your job, or do something else, but don't put fear in people's hearts. And for the whole community at large, me included, we all have a voice. We all can be heard. We all have to stand up and take action. If you have questions, ask questions. That's what they're there for. If someone comes to you with their hair on fire and tells you something, ask questions. Why was it left to the last minute? I don't know if proof was shown of this, but it's so important. Please know, you all have a voice. We all have a voice. Let's use it. Thank you.
Denise, Denise Smith. Okay, all right, okay. Renee?
Hi, my name's Renee Massey LaFaso. I'm at, and most people know me as the yard art lady. I'm at 24727 State Highway 16 North. Wow. Funny that I'm the last one, seems fitting almost. You know, I asked the previous mayor once at her very first council meeting, are you capable of being the mayor for all of Kerrville, or just those that you see fit? And through her terms, she answered that quite clearly to me. I'd like to go ahead and pose the same question, I guess, to two people on council. That would be Barudy and Vocal. You know, I mean, and I already have my answer, actually. I already know because you've been showing it with your actions. And it's sad, because this is a community. And I know a lot of people keep saying "we" as a community, and "we." In theory, yes, "we" as a community, but the reality is, not "we," are all in it, you know? Some of us, with their actions and with their constant flip-flop voting and inconsistencies in a, on a platform that's supposed to be consistent, you know, I mean, one would think, as a poor, struggling, artist citizen of Kerrville, who really does love this town, can you, I don't know, act as if you really give a shit about all of Kerrville? Because, because otherwise, if you can't, then, then citizens need to wake up and vote differently, you know? Because I see you, and a lot of others do too. And, you know, I mean, be a part of the actual community. Volunteer, you know? Get involved in positive ways. Don't just get involved at the very last minute with fear. I mean, come on, that's a manipulation tactic like no other, psychology 101, you know? That's not what we elected our councilmembers for. Oh, wait, we didn't. Act like you care about all of Kerrville, and I mean all of Kerrville. Thank you.
All right, okay. To, to get council discussion going, I move we adopt the plan as presented, with the caveat that we will, on July 10th, in the council at that time, appoint a committee to look at property maintenance standards, proactive code enforcement, and bring us back a report to the, to the council. So that concerns are addressed, but also the, the motion to adopt the plan as presented is also passed. Can I hear a second?
Mayor, we would normally have a discussion before we make a motion, and I believe we all understand, because it's been presented, that I was wishing to have a discussion prior to adoption. And I would, I would respectfully ask that we do that.
Now, we, we will go with the motion, as I've stated, if I get a second. And then we'll have discussion.
I second Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask Delane, excuse me, Councilperson Seigerman, and then Councilperson Barudy, and then Councilperson Eichner, if you would respond with any comments and discussions.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege to be here. I feel like I've just graduated from some small college, because I did attend every one but one meeting. I was on the steering committee. I wasn't on a particular subcommittee, but I visited quite a few of them just to listen to see what was going on. And a lot of these subcommittees, including the Neighborhood Corridor, particular subcommittee, there were, there were heated debates, and there were lively discussions about these particular concerns. So I have to assume intelligent minds prevailed. When they came up with the wording that they did, they had come together and managed to agree on the language that we currently have in this plan. On page 13 of this plan, and by the way, a good friend of mine, Joan Hefington, I met with him several times, and he encouraged me to do nothing else but just, if nothing else, just read the entire plan. I said, you know, I absolutely will, and I have, and I've actually reread parts of it, just to make sure I understood what I read. And it's, it's very encompassing. It's, it's probably the best plan we could have. I'm very excited about it. But on page 13, it says, "The goal of this document is not to prescribe Kerrville's future, but to provide a means by which it can be framed, understood, and planned." I think we owe it to the people who took the time to come and meet and give their opinions and formulate ideas and plans. I think we owe it to them to adopt this plan. And as we will continue to evolve it, amend it, revise it, add to it, it will, it's like any other plan you have, it will grow. It will become the future plan for our next generations. But without the plan, I think some things will be unprotected. Some things may happen we don't want. So I think we owe it to the people who worked so hard for it, including myself and most of you. So I, I vote that we approve and adopt this plan, and I look forward to seeing the benefits of it very soon.
So many things. Let's just start with the fact that a number of people have said that the problem is, I mean, the plan is not perfect. And they've said that we're supposed to be inclusive in the process, during the process. The big questions are, if it's imperfect and we know that, if there are imperfections that we are aware of, then why would we adopt it without fixing those? In hindsight, five years from now, we'll look back and say, it was wrong in this way or that way. But that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about are imperfections that are foreseeable and expected, that people apparently all see as well. As proof of that, the committee that Mr. Blackburn is suggesting to take place on July 10th is actually co-opting a proposal that I was going to make today, where we actually created a committee that looked at this problem of proactive enforcement of a property maintenance standard, which will, as studies have shown, be a contributing factor in low-income neighborhoods to involuntary displacement. The acknowledgement of that fact is the idea that we would create a committee. If there wasn't a problem to look at, we wouldn't create the committee. So my suggestion was going to be, and still is, that we would actually identify the items, which I've already done and Council has already seen, that we would be identifying those items in the plan currently, that Mr. Blackburn has obviously considered them problematic, and we would pull them out, and not actually pull them out of the plan, but reorganize the plan. Not to remove a single item that was worked on by any of the subcommittees, but to drop them under this creation of a committee that would be an early action item out of the plan, that would look at the, the items addressed, and recommend to city council a implementation plan of that. All of those items that were reorganized would all be reimplemented, with the one safeguard that everybody apparently agrees isn't in a real issue, which is that this particular policy would not contribute or cause involuntary displacement. Again, if, if it wasn't a problem, why would we be suggesting a committee after the fact? So why would we create a, why would we adopt a plan that we already know has a flaw? Why don't we fix the flaw before we adopt it? At least in name, why would we do that? The other thing that keeps, that's been brought up repeatedly is that somehow this is late in the game bringing it up. It's not. To those of you who aren't aware, we spent eight months of input, and we spent one month of output. We first saw a written-down document describing the plan, not the plan, but the action items, on April 27. I've been raising the, the issues that we're talking about, which essentially, I think everybody in the room probably already knows, but we're talking about gentrification in this particular case, involuntary displacement of citizens. That piece of the, the puzzle has been brought up many times prior to the comprehensive plan even being discussed by me, to staff, as a, as a concern, when we're going to do downtown revitalization. Because as most people realize, downtown revitalization is something we're going to be trying to do here, and it tends to lead towards some arguably...
It's, it's, it's probably the best plan we could have. I'm very excited about it. But on page 13, it says, "The goal of this document is not to prescribe Kerrville's future, but to provide a means by which it can be framed, understood, and planned." I think we owe it to the people who took the time to come and meet and give their opinions and formulate ideas and plans. I think we owe it to them to adopt this plan. And as we will continue to evolve it, amend it, revise it, add to it, it will, it's like any other plan you have, it will grow. It will become the future plan for our next generations. But without the plan, I think some things will be unprotected. Some things may happen we don't want. So I think we owe it to the people who worked so hard for it, including myself and most of you. So I, I vote that we approve and adopt this plan, and I look forward to seeing the benefits of it very soon.
So many things. Let's just start with the fact that a number of people have said that the problem is, I mean, the plan is not perfect. And they've said that we're supposed to be inclusive in the process, during the process. The big questions are, if it's imperfect and we know that, if there are imperfections that we are aware of, then why would we adopt it without fixing those? In hindsight, five years from now, we'll look back and say, it was wrong in this way or that way. But that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about are imperfections that are foreseeable and expected, that people apparently all see as well. As proof of that, the committee that Mr. Blackburn is suggesting to take place on July 10th is actually co-opting a proposal that I was going to make today, where we actually created a committee that looked at this problem of proactive enforcement of a property maintenance standard, which will, as studies have shown, be a contributing factor in low-income neighborhoods to involuntary displacement. The acknowledgement of that fact is the idea that we would create a committee. If there wasn't a problem to look at, we wouldn't create the committee. So my suggestion was going to be, and still is, that we would actually identify the items, which I've already done and Council has already seen, that we would be identifying those items in the plan currently, that Mr. Blackburn has obviously considered them problematic, and we would pull them out, and not actually pull them out of the plan, but reorganize the plan. Not to remove a single item that was worked on by any of the subcommittees, but to drop them under this creation of a committee that would be an early action item out of the plan, that would look at the, the items addressed, and recommend to city council a implementation plan of that. All of those items that were reorganized would all be reimplemented, with the one safeguard that everybody apparently agrees isn't in a real issue, which is that this particular policy would not contribute or cause involuntary displacement. Again, if, if it wasn't a problem, why would we be suggesting a committee after the fact? So why would we create a, why would we adopt a plan that we already know has a flaw? Why don't we fix the flaw before we adopt it? At least in name, why would we do that? The other thing that keeps, that's been brought up repeatedly is that somehow this is late in the game bringing it up. It's not. To those of you who aren't aware, we spent eight months of input, and we spent one month of output. We first saw a written-down document describing the plan, not the plan, but the action items, on April 27. I've been raising the, the issues that we're talking about, which essentially, I think everybody in the room probably already knows, but we're talking about gentrification in this particular case, involuntary displacement of citizens. That piece of the, the puzzle has been brought up many times prior to the comprehensive plan even being discussed by me, to staff, as a, as a concern, when we're going to do downtown revitalization. Because as most people realize, downtown revitalization is something we're going to be trying to do here, and it tends to lead towards some arguably problematic results. And so I raised those issues then. When I first saw the action items and we were first allowed to address them in a detailed format, was May 23. I brought it up there. I brought it up again at the steering committee. As has been incorrectly portrayed, I didn't actually vote for the recommendation of the, the steering committee. I did not vote for the plan moving forward. I would assume more than just me didn't, because the way it was done, we voted on it, we were asked to vote for it, those raised their hand. Asked for any against, nobody raised their hand, including me. But the, Mr. Waller actually pointed out, well, that's a majority. So clearly, he noticed that not everybody raised their hand. So it wasn't unanimous, not a big deal, but just a clarification. And so I, I would suggest that if we're already going to be addressing this problem, what is the rush to doing that? And what is, if you want to talk about, I mean, we're going to make the claim that part of the reason I'm bringing this issue up is that I'm somehow going to be running again. Tell me why you would co-opt the idea that was proposed to you on numerous occasions. So this is a question to Mr. Blackburn. Why would you do it this way instead of the way that I suggested? What, what is... What, what is better by doing that?
The, my, my, my desire in, in, uh, looking at that committee to look at those, those issues are, we have two persons on council have expressed this as very serious reservations that they have about the comprehensive plan, and have written in the paper about it, done community meetings about it, and everything else. I am willing to say, I will take those concerns seriously by having a committee look at this further, but tonight, I believe we are ready to adopt this plan as presented.
Okay, let me, let me, let me answer what, I know, but I, I'm, I'm not done, with all due respect. So basically, the, the idea there that you just described, though, is, number one, it isn't two council members, it's actually people in the community that are raising the issue as well. They still see the issue, and not everybody doesn't see it there. Plus, I had asked you, the reason I'm concerned about doing it in the order in which you're doing it, which is the committee after the adoption, is when I raised the issue to you directly, you, you didn't actually acknowledge that it was a possibility that it would cause these, these effects. If that's the case, and part of the reason the committee being implemented, as I presented in the proposal, was because it's a timing issue. As the 2002 comprehensive plan stated, which you worked on, that we shouldn't be doing revitalization, well, no, it said revitalization in neighborhoods will, will maybe cause pricing out of, uh, citizens from their neighborhoods. You should not do that until you've got affordable housing available, which we don't. The main reason I'm looking to change it so the, the committee takes these up is, one, we get the plan out, that action item implemented quickly, and we get the, the timing of things done in a way that it doesn't have the negative results, which are, it, I mean, I asked, I offered them to you, I offered them to everybody, and nobody wished to look at them, but there are studies, not George Barudy words, there are studies that look at this problem and have all concluded that this is a, uh, contributing factor.
Okay, let me say that, uh, you, you raised the issue, and I heard you in the meeting at the Barnett Chapel, uh, United Methodist Church, talk to the people in ways that was very scary and inflammatory, that their, that their community and their homes and their land would be taken.
I didn't say that, and, and to say that now is actually inflaming a situation. What I did, to be clear, was present excerpts from the plan and explain to them the, the chain of events that could likely happen, which isn't a, um, a inflaming of anything. I did not claim anybody was moving out.
Yeah, but George, one, I'm, Councilman, you said to the people there that, isn't it ironic that at one time the white people of Kerrville said all non-whites had to live in that area? And now they wanted the, the land and the property.
No, I didn't say that.
This entire, especially the neighborhood, that particular category, there are, there's wording that protects these families. I mean, literally, it says in there, "Through the existing regulatory framework, coupled with incentive programs for housing rehabilitation, the city can ensure that older neighborhoods are provided the tools to maintain quality and value." And then on page 144, it says that "The Kerrville should try to minimize displacement of people already in their neighborhoods, so that the sense of community and culture is not lost." So you left that out.
No, I didn't leave it out. I actually told them about it.
We didn't hear it tonight.
Okay, well, here, here's the situation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilman, I would call for the question.
Okay, all right. The question's been called for. Uh, all in favor of, uh, moving to a vote on this matter, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand?
I'm sorry, um, a third in your plan, and we're not gonna discuss it?
We have been discussing.
No, I mean, allegations are being, no, allegations are being made.
We're gonna consider the question. If we end debate and move to vote, those in favor of ending debate and moving, uh, to a vote, if you'd let it be known by the raised hands. Okay? All right, now, then we move, we move to, uh, the vote, uh, on the plan as presented with the committee that'll be presented July 10th on property maintenance standards and proactive code enforcement.
Hang on a second, are you incorporating that into the plan, or are you just saying that outside of the plan?
No, that's part of the motion. Okay.
Okay, but is it, is it modifying the plan, or is it just something that you're, you're promising after the plan?
It, it, we're voting on the, we're voting on the plan as presented.
Okay.
And then you have a committee to look at these issues, so that we have clarity going forward.
Okay, but the action that we're voting on is the plan as presented, period, right?
Uh, it is the plan as presented and the committee. All in favor...
Wait, wait, wait. So you're saying it's the plan as presented and the committee? Are you amending the plan?
My, my case, is this an amendment of the plan?
We need to separate the two.
Well, I think we're doing two things. I think that you're approving the plan as presented and ancillary to that, setting up that committee that'll come back for a vote on July 10th.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand?
It's a part of one motion.
Okay, thank you. This, this is a vote on adopting the plan as presented and having the committee that'll be presented later to the council to, to look further at property maintenance standards and the, uh, code enforcement.
But that's not an amendment to the plan, correct?
Yeah, it is not.
Okay, so then are we, are we to be doing that in the same vote of a second reading of a plan?
We can't amend.
It's not an amendment to the plan.
We can approve it tonight.
Are you clear on the motion?
Yeah.
I'm asking that.
Oh, are you, are you, are you clear? You're not clear.
Cause I'm, okay, he, he's suggesting we're not amending the plan.
Right.
And he's adding a second part to it, that we're gonna create a committee. Are we to be doing that on action item 2A? Because that's not part of the plan, it's not an amendment to the plan, it's a separate action, is it not?
Right.
So we shouldn't be doing...
He's not amending the plan.
Right, so it shouldn't be done in the same vote, is what I'm saying.
You know, you, you can do it, but it's not an amendment to the plan, right?
You can create a, you can create a committee all day long. I'm just, I'm just asking, are we voting on this? And if we are, how?
Okay, it's gonna come back on July 10th to set up the committee and talk about the committee, right?
Right.
If you prefer, Councilmember Barudy, for him to drop that out, I think you'd probably do that, knowing full well that it'll come back on the 10th. I don't have a problem with him, with the motion as it's stated. If you do, you can, you know, express that to colleagues.
Your thought would be making you more comfortable.
Well, I'm, I'm expressing it, because it's not on the agenda, and it's not an addition, it's not a modification to the plan, which is what's on the agenda.
Council, in my experience, does this all the time, where they vote to adopt a motion and then ask for a future item to be placed on the agenda. I think they're just trying to do this for efficiency's sake. If you'd prefer it to be in a separate motion or...
Yeah, I think it needs to be. We can vote twice, I don't have a problem.
Does it have to be?
No, I don't think it does. I think you all do this all the time.
Then I think we proceed, and we've actually already voted, so, um, the, uh...
What, what? How do we not vote?
While you were talking, when you approved it.
Yeah, we've already voted.
While I was talking with the attorney on it.
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, let's, let's vote again. This is to accept the plan as presented and the committee that'll be introduced to the, that'll be presented to the council July 10th on the other two issues, property maintenance standards and proactive code enforcement. And I will say again, I am, I am emphasizing that committee to respect two councilpersons that have obvious concerns for those areas. So let's clear those up, so we don't, don't have confusion going forward. Okay, all in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay? All right.
All opposed?
Yeah, all opposed. Sorry. Now, there you go. Uh, you're, you're correct, you're correct, I didn't do that, and you're correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I have just a second? I didn't get to express my opinion just a minute ago.
Okay, yes.
She's gone to the trouble to prepare it, so...
No, I just want to apologize to a neighborhood that has been singled out, and it was, has been alluded to tonight, talked directly about. This neighborhood was filled with an unnecessary fear as a result of this plan nearing completion and adoption. And if the people of this neighborhood, neighborhood were not incensed with the fact that they were singled out, I have been incensed with it, and I want to apologize to them. They were given information that made them angry, it made them scared, that should not have happened. There were other ways to handle that, it was manipulative, last minute, it was uncalled for, it was not treating people right, it was not respecting other people. And I just want them to know that there were many neighborhoods in this city of ours that should and could have been the target, and it should not have just been them. And I am sorry that they were the ones that were targeted, and I hope that in the future we can make that up to them.
Uh, Mayor, excuse me, before we move on, um, I would like to make some comments, uh, in closing. Number one, I would like to apologize to all the citizens that were cut off from the process at the end for some arbitrary reason, where public hearings were deemed not the place to speak up. The, I would actually not like to apologize to the specific neighborhood Councilwoman Eichner was speaking of, but actually thank individuals that actually did speak their concerns, because it was the first time they had been told about different aspects of the plan. And to those people, I'd like to say thanks, a very strong and warm thanks, which I've done personally to a number of them, but I'm just gonna single out their names now. Ms. Lillian Warren, Ms. Lois Shaw, Sylvia Lewis, Joe Lewis, Clifton Pfeiffer, Raymond Hardy, Todd Hardy, Ruben Exum, Sabrina Richardson, Dennis Lewis, Michael Green, Marion Shaw, Larissa Smith, Verline Payne, Charlie Payne, Jerome Shields, Reverend Diggs, Reverend Schuler, and Mary Lee Stewart, all of which came to city council meetings, as well as some came to, uh, a P&amp;Z meeting, and came to a, a community meeting where they were able to voice their concerns. My biggest concern here today is that a group of people who weren't actually afraid of falsehoods, they were looking for clarification from excerpts from the plan, and when given clarification from me, rather than actually dispute those facts, they were just told, "I don't know what," but it was more about the personalities involved, namely me, instead of the issues being raised. And it was my hope, and it still is, that they understand that speaking up does count, they did make a difference, they made a difference on this process, even if it's not the exact outcome that I would have liked to have seen, and to me, a misunderstanding on the part of the mayor, but it is still making an impact on a problem that is real, is obviously acknowledged, and therefore, they should be proud of the fact they stepped up, even in the face of people telling them, "No, sorry, thanks, you came too late." So I appreciate all of them and anybody else that spoke during the process. Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, the, the, uh, the punch, the punch is getting stale, so we're adjourned to the foyer.